Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just make a note that Councilman Beeler and Councilman Brungard are absent tonight. Old business, approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of September twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three were provided for review. So I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three as presented.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Obey.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? See no takers? Uh, new business, item number two is dangerous animal permit. Kathleen Edwards of seven oh five Canyon View Drive. The applicant submitted a dangerous animal permit application on nine oh five, twenty-twenty-three. The applicant was issued a disapproval letter for the permit application on nine nine, twenty-twenty-three due to the animal having a disposition or propensity to attack or bite any person or animal without provocation. The applicant filed an appeal with the city clerk's office and has submitted documents and a letter um with the appeal. And all you guys have seen that, that should have been on your desk here. Okay. So I'll first take an emotion to either approve or deny the dangerous animal permit for seven oh five Canyon View Drive.
Make a motion to deny. Dangerous animal permit for seven oh five Canyon View Drive.
Okay. We can do discussion after the motion.
I was just asking if she wanted to present anything.
What's that?
I was wondering if the applicant wanted to present anything.
Yes, but we can have discussion after the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's procedure.
First, second.
Okay, we have a motion or a second?
I said that we can have discussion after the second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, will you make a second? Is there a second on the motion to deny? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, now is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Okay. If whoever comes up to speak, just come up, give me your name and address for the council and then um just go ahead and give us what you got.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Edwards and I live at seven oh five Canyon View Lane and Canyon View Drive. And we are the owners, my family are the owners of Kaiser, the dangerous animal in question. We are appealing Chief Wayman's decision to deny us a permit to keep Kaiser based on the fact that no one talked to us before the decision was made to see what we have done and will continue to do to make sure that our neighbors and their animals are safe from Kaiser in the future. I am deeply sorry that Kaiser bit Mr. Anderson and I take full responsibility for the bite. I was in shock when the bite happened and Mr. Anderson left before I could really talk to him. When Captain Antiveros came to tell me that Kaiser had been declared a dangerous dog, I had a card already prepared with our contact information, Kaiser's vet information, and my insurance information on it. I did not know, and still don't know, where Mr. Anderson lives and could not deliver the card myself. I am willing to pay Mr. Anderson's medical bills and made that clear to Captain Antiveros. My family has taken every precaution we can think of to make sure that Kaiser is never able to hurt another animal or another person. We've engaged the services of Karen DeCastanza, a certified professional trainer specializing in the rehabilitation of aggressive dogs and their owners. I've met with Mrs. Ms. DeCastanza virtually on September tenth for an initial, initial consultation and then in person on September twenty-seventh and have another training session scheduled for October eighteenth. We are committed to implementing the training steps and suggestions that she has recommended for Kaiser and are already seeing improvement in his behavior. Um, Ms. DeCastanza wrote a letter outlining everything that um she has requested us to do and I have taken all of those steps. That would be the first letter in the packet of information that I gave you. On September fourteenth, as soon as Kaiser's quarantine was over, I took, I took him to our vet, Dr. Jennifer Brunner of the Lansing Veterinary Hospital to obtain medication to help with Kaiser's anxiety and fear that causes his aggression. She prescribed fluoxetine and trazodone, um, a combination of which is like doggy Prozac to keep him calm. Um, he's been taking that medication as prescribed and will continue to do so. He has a follow-up appointment with Dr. Brunner tomorrow at four o'clock and I brought his medications in. Uh, the trazodone has already been refilled at Walmart from the initial prescription. So I am giving it to him twice a day as she prescribed. We've been, we have obtained and are conditioning Kaiser to use a Leesberg bite-proof muzzle that he will wear when he is outside of our house, even in the backyard. Um, he's going to be on a four-foot leash according to the city ordinance and I have this muzzle. Uh, he's had it for about two weeks and he's able to wear it around his neck. In another week or so, he'll be able to wear it over his face. We've installed gates on both the front door um and the second and the garage door to provide a double barrier to Kaiser being able to accidentally get out if the, if those doors are left open, such as when we're bringing in groceries or we're taking out the garbage. Um, the door that we use the most is the one that leads to the garage and that gate is on a spring, so it closes automatically. There are pictures of that in your packet of pictures. We already have in place a six-foot privacy fence on three sides of our yard and a picket fence owned by my back neighbors on the fourth side. We've already reinforced these fences with wire and additional boards to make sure that the smaller dogs owned by my neighbors cannot get into our backyard. In addition to this, we have installed a ground tie-out that Kaiser is attached to when he's outside. It is sunk two feet into the ground and does not reach any of the fences. Again, there are pictures of that in your packet. Pictures four through seven are of my backyard showing the wire that I've put up on the fence. If allowed to keep Kaiser, we will replace the old fence with a new one and then reinforce that fence again with wire to prevent any dogs from coming into our yard or Kaiser from getting out of our yard. In accordance with the city ordinance, Article Four, Section two dash four oh two, we have posted beware of dog signs near the front door of our house and on the fence to the backyard. The gate to the backyard has a keyed padlock on it to prevent the gate from accidentally opening and those would be pictures eight through ten in your packet. If unknown Kaiser has a no-pull harness that he wears when he is outside in the backyard and outside of our house so that we have more control over him, um, that's picture eleven in your packet. If unknown guests or repairmen come to the house, Kaiser is restrained in a metal crate. In your packet, you will find all of the measures that we have taken to keep our neighbors safe. There are also letters from Dr. Brunner, Kaiser's vet, Ms. DeCastanza, Kaiser's trainer, and a variety of community members, some of whom are here today. Many others could not be here because of obligations with their children at different Lansing public schools. And these letters state that these people have observed Kaiser and they attest to the fact that he is not aggressive to people. These letters are from both people who know Kaiser very well and who are in our home frequently and people who have only met Kaiser once or twice. I am very sorry that Kaiser bit Mr. Anderson. I take full responsibility for this incident. We are taking every precaution that we can think of to ensure the safety and comfort of our neighbors. Kaiser has never bitten a person before and we will make sure that he never bites anyone again. Kaiser has provided emotional support to not only myself, but also my children and even my ex-husband as we went through our divorce. We are a retired military family and Kaiser has helped our children adjust to life after the military. I know that Kaiser is a large dog with a loud bark. He is not aggressive to people. He is aggressive to other small dogs. He can be intimidating because of his size. Kaiser is often triggered by dogs that live near me because they will bark at him and that increases his anxiety, thus the medication that we have put Kaiser on, all of the measures, including the no-bite muzzle that he will be wearing if he is outside of our house. Please consider all of the measures that my family has taken to address the issues that Kaiser has and to contain him in our house and our backyard before you make your decision. We are willing to implement whatever measures you require for us to keep Kaiser. Please let us keep our dog. Thank you.
Councilman, you got any questions?
Is this the first incident?
No, Kaiser has charged four dogs over the six years when he has gotten out through one of the, the doors that has been accidentally left open in my house when we're taking in groceries or taking out the garbage. That's why we installed the gates to keep him from being able to do that. He's also bitten two other dogs, one of them twice. Um, he bit our next-door neighbor's dog Daisy twice. She was off-leash the first time it happened. She came into my yard, stood at our gate and was barking at Kaiser. I did not realize that the spring that holds the gate shut had rusted through. Kaiser pushed open the gate and he bit Daisy. We yelled drop it. He dropped Daisy and I offered to pay for the, the vet bill. The second time he bit Daisy, Kaiser was contained in our backyard. Um, it's a wooden privacy fence and as you know, as those age, sometimes there are gaps that occur in those. Um, Kaiser was not able to fit his nose through any of those gates. He's an eighty-five-pound dog, so his nose, as you can imagine, is fairly large. Daisy stuck her nose through one of the holes, one of the gaps in the fence, and he bit her again. I offered to pay for the vet bill and that day I reinforced the fence not only with plywood but also with wire so that Kaiser could not get to Daisy even if she did stick her nose through the fence. Um, the first dog bite where he bit another dog was our other side next-door neighbors. Their cocker spaniel repeatedly would pee on the fence, kind of in Kaiser's face. My neighbors also have a privacy fence. Uh, my fence makes up half of their fence, their side between the two houses. They had it have a gate. Um, I was not comfortable going into their yard to check for loose boards. I did have all of the boards on my side of the fence taken care of and they were all, all screwed down. Um, there was a loose board. Kaiser put his nose through that gate or through that, that loose board and was able to bite that dog. But all of those times Kaiser was in my backyard.
Questions? I have some concerns. You, you uh, you've done a lot to protect um or to keep Kaiser from uh being aggressive.
Yes, sir.
And you now you have him on medication and now you have him in a muzzle.
Yes.
And now you have this and you've done that. You are, and if you continue to do things, you're just going to end up taking away his life. Okay, you're going to have him drugged. You're going to have him contained. He's not going to have any kind of a, a normal dog life in my mind.
With all due respect.
Four years from now, three years from now, you run out of medication and everything's been good for three years and he's off his medication and something happens, that's going to be on us or not.
Yes, sir, I understand that. Kaiser is a family member. He's not gonna be.
I had also, I had a, I grew up in the sixties and seventies, okay? So this uh dog being a part of the family doesn't really register with me. We had several dogs when I was growing up and my favorite dog got hit by a car. If my brothers or sister got hit by a car, I would gladly change places with them, but a dog, no. So I don't get that, I don't get that where the dog is part of the family at all. It's a pet.
Okay. Um, in response to your concern about Kaiser running out of medication and in three or four years not giving it to him, that's not going to happen?
Well.
People need to be on medication for health reasons and for mental health reasons for their entire life. Kaiser will be on medication for the rest of his life. It's not a super expensive medication. I had both his fluoxetine and his trazodone refilled just this week at Walmart and it cost me twenty-two dollars. So it's a minimal cost. He will continue to take that. Um, and Kaiser is seven years old. He's a big dog, so he doesn't have.
He is a big dog.
That many years left in him.
That dog looked pretty strong to me.
Yes, sir.
I think he has a lot of years left.
Um, my trainer, Karen DeCastanza, actually told me on September twenty-seventh that he is a dog that looks like he has muscular degeneration in his hind end and possible nerve damage because of that. Um, that is one of the reasons why he's going to the vet tomorrow to be evaluated for that. Um, if the vet tells me that Kaiser's quality of life is going to continue to go down, I will, my family will put him to sleep because we don't want him in pain. I know that dogs that are in pain can be more aggressive and we don't want that to happen.
Okay, uh, chief, do you have, did you have access to all this information on everything she's done recently to uh keep the dog in the house or not aggressive?
With, with the information that she's provided, no. I was out of town. I was on vacation during that time and that's why this process, I didn't meet with them because I just let the captain know. I knew this, I knew, there's a fifty-fifty here. There's people that are, are for, um, I'm sure they're, I'm, I'm sure they're, that's part of the family. That dog has been with him for a long time and it's done everything. But knowing the process, I went ahead and denied this just to get this thing going a lot faster. Um, as far as all the information that's been provided with everything that's done, once I, once I disapprove the permit, if you guys approve the permit, then we back, go back in the permit process and we go back and we check everything and we, we investigate it. Um, that's how, that's how we work at it. It's now in, basically it's in your guys' court. What you have, I don't know. We'd look at our, our bit and basically redo the permit process.
That was another thing. If we, if we approve it or let her keep the dog and something happens, are we, are we the ones who held life?
If it's a permit, it, you know, with everything that the, the.
Uh, not we, the city.
The city. Um, with everything that's required, with the insurance requirements and everything else, they're still, they're still the, the owner of the animal. So I mean, it ultimately falls back on us, you know, if they take all the, the, the safety precautions. Um, you know, it's the, the same thing as if somebody builds a house to code and, and though somebody does something a little bit different than code or, or whatever happens just because we have a requirement that they adhere to and somebody gets hurt in your house, you know, you're still technically liable for that. It's not on the city for doing that, um, on this one. So this is just one of these rare cases that the, that's a neighborhood where there's, there's some for, there's some against and, and on that whole bit and that's why we're rushing into this.
I have one question just for clarification. Ms. Edwards, in your letter, it said the bite did not break the skin. It was my understanding it did and it bled.
When Mr. Anderson walked away from my house, he had three or four scratches that were not bleeding, like dripping down his, his body and I'm sure what was going to be one heck of a bruise. I have no doubt that it hurt and that it was an emotionally traumatic experience for Mr. Anderson. It was emotionally traumatic for me and I, I'm the owner, I, it.
Well, I guess I'm just saying in, in your letter, it say, it states the bite did not break the skin.
From what I saw.
It sounds like maybe we should ask the person who was bit.
Absolutely. Mr. Anderson?
My name is.
Don't have a question. I have a comment when the time comes.
So for the record, my name is Brian Anderson. I live at six hundred Canyon View Drive in Lansing. And uh, so what happened to me this day is, um, it was Labor Day morning. I was walking my dog on the sidewalk. I noticed as I was approaching the Edwards's residence that she was out in her front yard and I believe a teenager and they were, I think, adjusting the tire pressure on one of their vehicles, something like that. And all of a sudden, this German shepherd just rose up out of the yard and started charging at me. I saw the dog coming. I could see it had like a black leash behind it and it had one of these, uh, I don't even know what it's called, but it's like a little half-inch, um, it's like a muzzle protector probably to keep a, a dog from nipping at you or something. So I grabbed my dog and I picked it up and I was holding it up like this and I, and I was yelling it, you know, say, stay, you know, calm down, whatever. I was trying to calm the dog down. I was hoping it wouldn't be a big issue, but it started jumping on me. Um, it started hitting me over and over and then it got that leash loose off of its muzzle and it, and it bit into me and it, um, I went to the urgent care afterwards. I've got pictures for you. You can see. It was not fun. Uh, they would have stitched it up, but it's a dog bite, so they don't put stitches in a dog bite. They told me I was on antibiotics. I still have a scab. I still have an injury. It's, it's literally the size of my hand and it's right here. So, you know, the, the frustrating thing for me too is that this isn't the first time that I had a run-in with that dog and I didn't think about it until after this fact. And I was thinking, you know, about six months ago probably, I was walking, the same day, it was in the afternoon. I was walking my dog. I had just passed their house and there, someone started raising the garage door. It got about halfway up and that dog started barking and charging straight out at us then. And I tried to grab my dog. My dog saw it coming, so it was barking and everything. And I grabbed my dog and she got a hold of him and pulled him off before something bad happened, right? So it was a near miss. I don't know if that's one of your four times that it's attacked another dog, but that was definitely one where it was going to happen, so. And I've got some pictures here. If you guys want to see them on my tablet, um, I couldn't print them off or I would have, but uh, just so you can see the extent of the, of the damage. I did go, like I said, I went to urgent care that day, um, after I was bitten and this happened. A, a neighbor, the next-door neighbor, uh, came outside of her home because she heard the hollering and the yelling and, and um, actually said, recommended to me that I call the police and file a report because they had had, you know, other problems with the animal attacking their dog and it's been going on. And, you know, when you know the dog's seven and the dog's attacked, how many people or how many dogs now? And yeah, I'm the first person maybe, but I mean, now is when you decide to take all these protective measures. It's like, we shouldn't have done that, I don't know, four years ago or whatever, when the dog started be, started this aggressive behavior. It's, it's a dangerous animal, in my opinion, and it shouldn't be allowed there. I mean, if it's left, I'm not going to feel safe walking around my neighborhood. I'm going to tell you that, so. That's all I have. If you guys had, happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
No, appreciate it. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on the topic? Or I'm going to have to start limiting you guys to like five minutes, so. Sorry.
Good evening, uh, gentlemen. My name is Diana Henley. I live in seven twelve Canyon View Drive, Lansing, Kansas. My house is kitty corner across the street from Kathy's house and I'm going to tell you briefly what happened the night that Kaiser attacked my dog Elsa. Elsa is not a small dog. Elsa is a sixty-eight-pound dog. And so Kaiser is not only attacking small dogs. And um, this happened the last weekend of September on twenty-twenty-one and I was walking Elsa the last walk of the night and I happened to pass their house. All of a sudden, their garage door opened and all I remember was Kaiser darting toward my Elsa. And it was very confusing. I got Elsa on the leash. All I remember was pulling her as hard as I could because I wanted to save her. And we were in circles until finally, I don't remember who got a hold of Kaiser and was able to pull her off. Um, after that, I looked at her and I said, uh, she said, I remember, I tell, I will pay for any bills. She never did. After that, she never checked on us and how Elsa was doing or anything. Um, and uh, I remember saying, I volunteer for the Lebanon County Humane Society. I know dogs can be aggressive. I know it's not a dog's fault. And, and indeed, I've been a volunteer for over seven years at the Humane Society. I know that dogs can be aggressive and dogs can be, um, dog reactive. Uh, but this dog unfortunately is a dangerous case. And um, after I went home that night, I went in a panic attack. My daughter, thank goodness, she handles these situations well. She helped me take care of Elsa. Elsa had a, a wound on her right side of the hip and um, it got infected. So I, she was treated with antibiotics. And um, after a few hours, because of the adrenaline, I didn't feel it at the moment, I um severely bruised my right foot and I went to urgent care because it was black. And they took an X-ray. It wasn't broken, thank goodness, but it took a while to heal. After this experience, I definitely, I never, my dog even, never goes that way of the street. I don't feel safe. Every time I go running with my daughter, I'm always in kind of, in an alert mode just looking, is the gate closed? Is the garage door closed? I'm in a trauma. I mean, and there are kids, little kids walking dogs as well, as, I mean, younger kids. So um, I feel sorry for Kaiser and as I said, I love dogs and I am passionate about rescue and everything, but um, this is not a life for, for Kaiser. And I also noticed a few days ago, um, Kathy was with Kaiser on, at the parking lot of Willow Park and Kaiser was just wearing the same kind of, uh, it's not, it's not a, it wasn't the muzzle that she brought here. It was just wrapping around his snout. So I'm not sure if she is going to really take the precautions that needed, that is needed uh, or that are needed to be, uh, safe in the neighborhood. Thank you.
May I address the muzzle concern?
Um, I think there was one. Was anybody else going to speak? I'll, I'll give them opportunity first. Go ahead. Come on up and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Lori Delmatris and I live at seven oh seven Canyon View, which is um, right next door to Kathy and I'm the owner of Daisy that was attacked twice. And um, the first time, well, when we moved in, she forewarned us that um, her dog had, Kaiser had attacked another dog and that um, he had a high prey drive and goes for small animals. So she, I was kind of in fear from the, the moment we moved in and um, I'm sorry if I'm going to get emotional, but I actually had a dog that had to be put down because it was dangerous. So I've been where she is. And I've also watched this gentleman get attacked in front of my house and I've, I've been the one that's went and helped Daisy when she was attacked. And so it is very traumatic and the first time that it happened, um, Daisy got out of our minivan and I was taking her to the backyard and Kaiser busted out of the fence at her. I was right there with the dog and I scooped her up and I was trying to get Kaiser off of her and I actually got bit in the hand that time and I didn't notice it until after my adrenaline came down later. And um, they did come out and get Kaiser to get off of her, but I had to take her to the vet and um, there in Lansing, they already were aware of Kaiser, knew Kaiser, told me that Kaiser was on Prozac way back then. And um, the second time Daisy was attacked, um, he, they, they both go bark at each other at the fence, but Kaiser pushes the fence and, and pushes at it and we have to re-screw the boards back in and make sure that the boards are secure all the time. And that time, he pushed his head in and actually bit Daisy in our yard. Not Daisy's little nose went through the fence. We continuously, because we had, when we moved in, our girls were seven. They're now thirteen. And um, it was a constant fear that those girls were going to get hurt. And I didn't turn her into the police the first two times. One, because she was a friend and two, because I had been on the receiving end of that and I knew what it was like. And um, when I seen him get hurt the other day, it just sunk in that that could have been my daughter out front, one of my thirteen-year-old twin girls with Daisy and if he had charged on one of them, they would have been knocked to the ground and mauled before they, they could ever get Kaiser back off. And honestly, since all of these things have happened two times to Daisy, Eric, um, his cocker spaniel, all these times, why is she still allowing it to happen? And how serious is she going to be about taking care? And, you know, and the dog's already been on medication. And I'm tired of living in fear for my daughter's lives. I don't think that it's fair to Kaiser. I feel bad for him, but I, and I feel, I don't, I don't know, sirs. I'm sorry. I just, I really just want to be able to not have to worry about my dog getting hurt or my kids getting hurt in my neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Sure. Now, what I'm not gonna do is have like the, no it didn't, yes it did, you know, we have most of the facts, so, I mean, please, just state your name, given your address and then let us know what you have to say.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Lexi Wardlow, I live at 15600 West 146th Street in Alatha, but I did live on 526 Heather Green, so I'm from here. I'm a longtime friend of the Edwards', I've known them about six years. So as you imagine, I've been over several, several times. From the first time I went over, I've never experienced any aggressive behavior towards Kaiser, even when I was unfamiliar to him. As for the concerns for his quality of life currently with the given precautions, because obviously that's gonna be a concern, I have not personally seen any negative impact from him being on the medications. I mean, given being someone who's known him for six years, I would be able to tell if there was like a difference in behavior, if I felt he was groggy or, you know, just not really there. And I really haven't seen that, I've just seen a happy, friendly dog. I've even brought my younger brother around and he did not have any negative experience with him. I think that someone who's been over there several times, I have seen them implementing the changes that they have stated, the gates are up, they have been training him with the muzzle. I believe that the Edwards' are doing everything to the full extent that they can. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Am I to understand that this has been going on for about six years? Somebody help me here?
Yes, yes. At least we've been there five years, that's been going on.
Excuse me, Joe, I apologize for my parents, I'm actually her ex-husband and I'm not gonna, I've retired military, I grew up with a military dog. My dad was from Missouri, always believed the animal should be outside, we've had it I can't say that, I'm not gonna say that Kaiser didn't do those things. I know animals, I know German shepherds, they're very territorial. I know why he bit both dogs, it's because he sees it as his territory, he sees from the front to the back. People are talking about, they're fearful of how Kaiser would go out. I will tell you, we've been into Tractor Company, we've been in Home Depot, we've been in nine different kennels here, he's neither bit a dog there or an individual there. I think that's the thing we're looking at, yes, there are things that we did do and we thought he was good and obviously we were wrong in that sense of how we were taking care of those precautions. When we divorced, that was her, that was her service animal. And if any of you guys have ever served and you've been near a bomb explosion, you know that, that trauma is, divorce was bad on her and on my kids. And that's what that dog served as. When you don't see it as a family member, I see it as a family member and then some. I can't, you know, I'm not gonna say please forgive what Kaiser's done, he did it, there's no fact, you know, I'm not gonna fight those facts. I know that we misspoke in the sense when we said it was a prey aggression, he has a small dog fear, our veterinarian was the one that told us that when we got Kaiser, that the lady that owned him had small dogs, she abused them and allowed the small dogs to nip and bite, that's why he has that fear. And so we've kept Kaiser away from small dogs. We did tell both of our neighbors after the first incident, or, sorry, the second incident with the tangents, that they needed to go back and secure on their side because we don't wanna enter their yard by that time. Our neighbors to the left and both to the right had fences up and I'm not gonna go in their backyard. We told them that they needed to. And when the second incident with Daisy did happen, Juan and I, which is Lori's husband, went in the back and we looked and we both verified, and you can call me a liar if you want right now, but we showed that Kaiser's nose could not get through there, it was small enough for Daisy to get through there. There is a video that we have, I don't know if Kathy kept it, but it is a video showing me trying to put my, like, if Kaiser's snout was in there, he wouldn't fit through. But her dog's snout would fit through. I've been on that back deck without my dog in the back and her dog will run at the fence every time. We have done everything we needed to, to try to, with Prozac and everything else to bring it down, but it's kinda hard when on both sides, you still have the small dogs that are gonna attack the fence, so it triggers. Just like if you tell me, there's no more, no more bombs, but you have fireworks left and right of me every time, I'm gonna be triggered. And we do try. And they are trying. I'm no longer with my ex and I live somewhere else, but this has definitely been her companion since I left. I'm sorry that this happened to Mr. Anderson, but if you notice, he's never attacked people until that point and it's when he was saying his dog was barking, that's, that, it's like a trigger for Kaiser. They're barking at each other and he's trying to protect his dog.
My dog wasn't barking.
My dog wasn't barking.
And I, and I, I didn't know that that had happened to your dog, I apologize. He does, he is territorial, just, and that's why when you go on the front, that's what he does and I apologize.
Let me ask you, sir.
No, go ahead.
If I could, if I could, let me ask you, you know these things, she knows these things, that the dog has small dog anxiety issues. We got all the right comments put here and you still feel that's not a problem? I'm just asking you, because we both served and we both retired.
Well, with small, with the small dogs, yes, and that's why she's gotten the muzzle. What we had was that gentle lead so he couldn't pull, that's what you're referring to, was the gentle lead that he had on it, it wasn't to prevent, we take him up to the dog park that's over here by the vet station and we let him run. You have a friend, a friend of mine wrote a letter talking about how she took care of him in a totally different area, totally different apartment, was not aggressive towards anyone or any other dog. So it's just, when it, when it comes to his yard, if you know German shepherds, if you know dogs, that's their territory. And it's, it is what it is and I'm not trying to take away from what that is. I've been in Iraq where we had a dog and he would bark at all the Iraqis because we fed the dog and we took care of him. And so Kaiser is the protection for our family, he is her companion. And that's all I came up to say.
Okay. All right, I think I've heard enough information on this one, unless anybody wants to mention anything else.
Hi, my name is Tristan Edwards, I live at 705 Canyon View Drive, I am the daughter of Kathy and Nat. To address earlier why you saw Kaiser at Willow Park, the professional trainer that we have, that we're working with, she highly recommends doing decompression walks with Kaiser to improve his quality of life. And that's where we take him on a long lead, I believe it's a fifteen-foot length, lead, and we do have a full body harness for him. And we take him to places that are isolated, so just a field where he can sniff and walk around and just be a dog. We do that about thirty minutes a day and we always make sure that there's no children around and that there is no other animals around. Willow Park during the day for the most part is empty, during the season there is soccer games, mostly on the weekends, so we always do check by driving by, just making sure that there is nobody there or anything like that. It is to help improve his quality of life and it is recommended by the trainer and we are appearing to every part of what she has recommended to us because Kaiser is something, somebody, someone, some dog that we really do care about and we promise that we are doing our best to appear to what will benefit him and what will benefit our neighbors in keeping everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had a...
Mayor, if I could just add something, just to the extent that it would even matter to, as part of this discussion, any of the descriptions that would, if you accept it as happening on the property of the owner of the dog? You've heard some evidence and reference to, or at least some testimony so to speak, in reference to it happening where the dog lives. That, under Kansas law, is basically, they're not liable for that, it'd be a trespass for that other animal to be on their property. If it stuck its whole head, for example, through their fence, gets attacked or bitten by an animal, that is not the responsibility of the homeowner. It's, if her dog broke through their fence, got on their property, that's a different issue. I just wanted to clarify that.
So you're talking about...
The sidewalk is the wrong way.
Well...
Yes.
Again, I'm not...
I actually wasn't on their property.
No, no, that's, you misunderstand what I'm saying, I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about, there was a description of two possible incidents that occurred within their backyard, as I understood it. I'm just bringing up the fact that, under Kansas law, that would not be a liability issue for the homeowner because that would be a trespass. I'm not talking about this gentleman walking his dog out front, any of that, I'm talking about the two fence incidents. So to the extent that that were your consideration, that's the only reason I'm bringing up.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Okay, we had a motion to deny and a second.
I'd like to know, if it's found in denial, what's next?
I believe she'd have thirty days to rehome the dog.
But there's a letter here from the veterinarian that says, "That's the worst thing in the world for a dog with anxiety." But that's, that's the bottom line, either they move or they rehome the dog. That's what we're talking about?
I believe that being given thirty days to rehome the dog is inaccurate.
And the reverse of that is if the dog bites another person, yes. That's it for the dog, right, Steve?
I see your question.
When he's come after, I just wanna say something. I've had dogs almost my entire adult life. I support Leavenworth Humane Society, so I get the attachment with animals. I have a dog to date that was diagnosed with epilepsy. We gave him a pill and one pill didn't do it, so we gave him another pill. And while it made him better, it didn't solve the problem. So in consultation with our vet, we could give him another pill, which the result would be that he would basically sleep all the time. And that's not what we wanted for our dog, we wanted him to be active and run and do all the things dogs do. So in a way, this is a tough decision, but in a way, I have always said that our number one duty, our number one responsibility is for the safety and health of the citizens. That has to be number one.
Do you have a question for Steve?
Well, we're talking about if he bit somebody. Traditionally, if he, since we had, you know, we're looking at one bite, the next bite, if there were to be a second bite, he would be taken into custody, placed at a vet until such time court came along. Historically, the dog is put down, that's the historical side of this one. It's done, the vet, it's a court order on that. The options that are at hand, if it's approved, we go back into the permit process, we go over, we inspect, we make sure everything's on line with what they're saying and what they're putting in. If the, if this is disapproved, you know, we work with the family, we're not gonna come over there and we're not gonna kick in the door tonight, we're not gonna take the dog and we're not gonna do that, we will work with them so that they try to, they have an opportunity to rehome the dog because, you know, it is, it is a canine and that's, you know, given an opportunity that's kinda can work for the dog and work for the family on that. And that's really our options, because like you said, if we go to option three and it, this happens again, we won't be here. And when it goes before the court, the last, that's the final option on that. If it were to happen again, that's the final option for the dog.
Okay, thanks, yeah. All right, any more discussion? All right, so we have a motion to deny the dangerous permit for 705 Canyon View Drive and a second. So call the roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
And motion passed, which means it is denied. Okay.
How long do I have now to rehome Kaiser?
Thirty days.
Thirty days from today? Thank you.
This was not an easy decision, Darren, well, this is ripping my frickin' heart out because I'm a dog lover. It's all mine.
I agree, but...
And I see you all the time. I wave and speak at you, Mr. Anderson. I'm your neighbor right around the corner from you.
All right. Item number three is an executive session on personnel matters of non-elected personnel. I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel matter, exception KSA 754319 Bravo One, for a period of fifteen minutes, beginning at seventeen forty-five and ending at eight o'clock.
Don't move.
I have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Make your motion again, I think, or make a motion and return to open session.
I have a motion and a second to return to open session, again.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Okay, we are back to open session. Now, item number four is executive session, consulting with the attorney. I need a motion to enter into executive session for a consultation with the city attorney, which we deem privileged attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75431 Bravo Two for twenty minutes, beginning at eight oh two and ending at eight twenty-two.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Need a motion to return to open session?
Don't move.
I have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Return to open session, no biting action was taken. Reports. A library report, not doing that, but it's in the packet.
Yep.
City administrator.
So you guys received notification Detective Bill Lynn will be retiring, so if you are able, please try to attend his retirement ceremony tomorrow. Bill has done a great job serving the city for a lot of years, we're really gonna miss him, he did a great job. We spoke several months ago about that water line that went through Center Drive that would accommodate future commercial development. If you guys recall, I think our motion was up to $400,000, so that project is wrapped up, the city share was $314,000. So Landell also chipped in about $100,000 on that. So we're really thankful to Chairman Kovalesky and the Landell Board for their partnership on that project. So with that, that would leave about $500,000 in ARPA funds remaining, so. I'd spoken to you guys too about that KDOT Regional Consult on October seventeenth, so that is this big meeting with hundreds of people from different cities and jurisdictions who basically go to inform KDOT about projects in their jurisdictions and kind of state their case. That truly is one of those meetings where there's strength in numbers, the more people we have there to advocate for K5 and other Leavenworth County projects, the better off we'll be. I know a couple of you guys had already spoken to me about that, but any of you guys who want to attend that, if we have more than three, I think we'll need to do the notice of quorum, but we would love it if we had a great turnout to advocate for K5 and Leavenworth County projects.
I look on my deal, I don't have anything going on that day, so I'd like to join in.
Perfect.
It's in the staff hours, Kevin, so you'll be fine, right?
Well, I think it's one to five, I'll double check on that, so. But anyway, I'll keep you guys posted on that because we would love it if we had a great turnout on that. We received six proposals for IT services, we have a subcommittee that went through those, we've whittled that down to three IT proposals and we'll be interviewing the three different companies next week, so. Also, on that subject too, if you guys recall, I think in the next few weeks, we'll also be receiving proposals for banking services. I believe the two council members who volunteered for that committee were Mr. Stoudnica and Mr. Major, so we will keep you guys posted once we get those, so. And that is all I have.
All right, thanks. City engineer, you're not here tonight. City attorney?
Other reporter.
All right, got anything, chief?
Nothing.
All right, all right, we'll go around the horn, Gene.
Just a tough call on the vicious animal, but I think at the end of the day, we made the right call. We have to thank everybody's safety first, so it was a tough one. That's it, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jean Marcus.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what you said, that's hard, we're all Doug, we love animals, so. Thanks for tonight.
Thanks for tonight. Thanks for all the work that's gone into tonight. We've had a lot of good discussions in open forum as well as executive sessions. And I can't thank Tim and the team enough for all you're doing. Fish, thank you. That's all I got, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Jessie?
Congratulations, Bill, on your retirement. I thank you for all your years of service to the city. We really appreciate everything you've done. I agree that it was a hard decision with the animal, but we made the right decision for the community. Last night's dinner, the recognition dinner, was an awesome event. I'd like to thank everybody who took time to put that event together because it was a real big success. The food was awesome, by the way. Everybody did a great job with that, so. Thank you again. That's all I got.
All right, well, you're welcome, Jessie. Dan? Everybody did a great job. I was still in the speaker's side. Go ahead.
I'd just echo what's been said previously. Nothing else.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Don?
Ditto on the previous comments and I don't have anything, Mayor.
Kevin?
Yes, as I was going through the deal, I looked at the library report and she, Terry, continues to do a stunning job over there. And I'd like to say thank you to Rotary Club of Leavenworth for that big donation. And I think it was able to take care of two hundred and one children. So that was very nice. And that little chart, she's doing more this year than she did last year and it just continues to improve over there, so. Like to thank her for that. That's all I have.
And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call the roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
We are adjourned.